The motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the board during the closed meeting. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mrs. Corbett Sanders, second by Mrs. Strauss. All in favor, raise your hand. All right, and so we have certified that meeting. Thank you. For the public, I want to apologize for our going over and starting an hour late this morning. And I also want to let people know that Pat Hines, who was supposed to be a meeting manager today, is out sick. So Mr. McElveen is going to co-manage today with Mrs. Corbett Sanders. And with that, I will turn it over to Mrs. And Mrs. Strauss rightly reminds me that we are going to have another closed meeting this evening, probably at 7:00 or as soon as we get to the end of artwork session today. Mrs. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you all for your patience with us. We have a lot of work to cover today, so I'm going to jump right in and turn the meeting over to Chase Ramey, our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, to present the compensation study.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Today, we will continue the conversation regarding our work around the compensation study. As with our previous meetings, we are joined by Heather Kazimi of Legal Siegel Waters Consulting. Today, we will recap our work to date, and then we will spend the bulk of our time discussing the compensation design frameworks and proposed salary scales for teachers and school-based administrators. We will then have an opportunity to share implementation considerations and look at next steps as we move forward. There are several reasons that FCPS has undertaken the compensation study. Primarily, it ties to and supports Strategic Plan Goal Three, Premier Workforce. In addition, the comp study is directly responsive to our employees' voice, which we heard through the engagement study, excuse me, survey offered earlier this spring. Specifically, it speaks to the drivers within the study: career growth, work environment, and feedback and recognition. Our work through the compensation study will assist the division in addressing an area that the engagement study reported was a best opportunity for increasing employee engagement, as well as enhance our efforts surrounding Goal Three, Premier Workforce. Beyond the compensation study's support of the strategic plan, the study addresses and recognizes FCPS's market position, provides an opportunity to construct an understanding of compensation in surrounding jurisdictions, and will assist FCPS in developing a new compensation model that will support division efforts to recruit, retain, and support highly effective During our meeting back in March, we shared philosophy goals for leading this work. Those goals are captured on this slide. Scales we market competitive and market-competitive defined. Employee input will be reflected in the new models. Employees will not see a decrease in salary through implementation. Scales will be easily understood, and the new system will be sustainable. With these goals in mind, we moved into the next phase: the development of the compensation model design framework for the teacher scales. These philosophy goals are embedded in that work, and we will circle back to them throughout this morning, excuse me, this afternoon's discussion. As we look at the framework for teacher compensation, there are three main drivers for the pay scales: market-competitive salary ranges, pay lanes based on educational attainment, and faster career earnings. These elements are not only reflective of the philosophical goals, but they reinforce ideals that we heard from our teachers through the compensation study survey and the focus groups. As we established the framework for the creation of the pay scales, we focused not only on how the scales would make us competitive with surrounding school divisions and assist in attracting highly effective teachers, but we also ensured that we were being responsive to the voice of our current employees. I will now turn it over to Heather to discuss these elements in more detail and walk through the development of the recommended scales. Heather?
Thank you. Good afternoon. Starting with the teacher pay scale composition, as Chase mentioned, the first driver of the pay scales is to be market-competitive. We're targeting career earnings within 95% and 105% of the market average. And that philosophy of the 95% to 105% of the average is consistent with the county's compensation philosophy as well. The scale is created to be more competitive at the beginning steps to support our ability to recruit new educators. And the midpoint of the salary scale is reached seven years earlier than the existing scale, and I'll explain what I mean by that as we go through. But the current scale provides very small increases in the early steps, but larger increases near the end of the pay scale. We're proposing to reverse that model. That is, to provide larger pay increases in the early years, or those early steps, to reflect the professional skill development that occurs in those early years in an educator's career. Now, the second goal, or the second driver, is to maintain education-based pay lanes. We are proposing to continue this, the way the pay scales are currently divided, that is, the pay lanes are based on a teacher's educational level. But we're also proposing to reduce the number of lanes to align better with the market. What we mean by that is currently, we have six pay lanes for teachers, three for those with a bachelor's degree, two pay lanes for those with a master's degree, and then one for those with a doctorate or PhD. We're proposing to consolidate the BA plus 15 and the BA plus 30 pay lanes to have five pay scales, as you see on the slide. We found that most of our comparator school districts have fewer lanes, and the BA plus 30 lane is not common. So that's why we're proposing this consolidation. And again, each pay lane is designed to achieve that market-competitive 30-year career earnings between 95% and 105% of our survey average. So the third goal, or the third driver, is to have faster career earnings. This is something that came out of the employee survey that we did, and also the focus groups with teachers, that it does, it takes quite a long time to reach the maximum of the scale. And the current scales are designed to reach the top step in 23 to 29 years, assuming annual steps are granted. This model lags the market, that is, many of our comparator school districts design their scales to have a shorter timeframe, which resulted in that, that pay gap that we saw in the middle years, if you can remember back to, I think it was in March, we saw the pay lines, and there was a gap in the middle, in the middle career years of an educator's career. So consequently, we propose to shorten the salary ranges by four to six steps, so that the maximum was reached in 19 or 23 years. So as you see on the slide, the bachelor's lanes would reach the maximum step at 19 years, again, assuming annual steps are granted. And then the masters, masters plus 30, and the PhD lanes are designed to have a maximum step reached after 23 years. We're also proposing to eliminate those hold steps, or those longevity steps. It's also not as common in the market, and I think from what we've heard in both the survey and the focus groups, that those longevity and hold steps were not, not popular, not easily understood, and we just thought it would make it more administratively and easier to understand the pay scale if it was designed without those hold steps. So this, the next slide says a little more about what I mean by the faster career earnings. Currently, the pay progression has these very small increases in the early steps. So you see, for example, in the bachelor's and bachelor's plus 15, in steps one through five, the pay increases associated with the step increases range from 1% to 2%, very small increases in those steps. But then, as you move up the pay scale, say it's steps 10 to 15, those are 3% per year step increases, similar on the masters lane. So what we're proposing to do is, in the far-right column, in steps one through five, it's a 4% increase per year. Step six through nine, three or three and a half, and then 2%, then 1%, and reaching the maximum step at, for those in the bachelor's lane, at step 23, excuse me, 19, and then 23 for the masters lane. And again, the purpose of this is to reward and recognize the career, professional, and skill growth that occurs in those early years. So the effect of all these changes is shown on the next slide. Here you see a 30-year career earnings total. The first row shows the same numbers we showed to you in March, which was the FY16 pay scale, and that's the 30-year career earnings total for these five pay lanes. The second row is 30-year career earnings for the FY17 teacher pay scale. And in the middle, the, the orange row in the middle is our proposed future scale. And we've compared that to our projected FY18 market average. And you see here, for the bachelor's lane, over a 30-year career, we're projecting that that bachelor's lane, over a 30-year time period, is 101% of the market average. The bachelor's plus 15 is also 101%. The masters lane, 102. The masters plus 30, 101%. And the PhD or doctorate lane, 99%. So all of our proposed scales are within 1% to 2% of our projected market average for FY18. This would put us in a much better position, much better competitive position than the current scales, which are about 6% to 9% below market. So the next slide shows more details for just the masters lane. We'll focus on that because the majority of, of our teachers have a master's degree. So this, this table shows the market position at selected steps: steps one, five, 15, and so on, in our proposed masters pay lane. At step one, our proposed scale is equal to the market average. At step five to 15, the proposed scale is slightly above the market average. And again, this is designed to correct the problem of the below-market pay rates during those middle years, which are currently 7% to 10% below. While the scale dips below market in the, in the highest steps, over a 30-year career, a teacher's total earnings are projected to be 102% of the market average on the masters pay lane. So the next slide shows a line graph, the same kind of information. The dotted blue line is our proposed scale. The solid blue line right below it is the projected FY18 market average. The red line is the FY17 scale. And the green line below that is the FY16 scale. So as you can see, the proposed scale meets our goal to be more competitive and have more rapid career earnings, to facilitate more successful recruitment and retention of high-quality educators, and to stay within that 95% and 105% corridor of the, of the market average. So the next slide compares this scale to the concepts we showed you in March. If you recall, in March, we talked about Concepts A, B, and C, different potential approaches. You asked us to look at Concepts B and C and kind of create a hybrid between the two. So I thought I would share with you how we accomplished that. So Concept B is that top line that kind of peaks right there on the graph, and that had steep pay increases until step 15, and then no increases after that. So that was Concept B. Concept C is that light, kind of yellow or orange line right below it, with graduated increases and then tapering off and having some hold steps. So again, you asked us to develop a scale. There was a combination of these two, which we did, and again, it's the dotted blue line here on the graph. So the next slide compares our proposed scale to our primary competitors for talent. In this graph, the top two lines represent two of our primary comparator school districts, and we're showing here their FY16 pay scales, the same scales we showed you in March. And again, the dotted blue line is what we're proposing for the future. So you can see, our proposed future scale is designed to be competitive with these scales in the early years. So now, let's move on to school administrators. To design the school-based administrator pay scale, we had four goals. The first is to have market-competitive salary ranges. The second is to have a separate salary scale for school-based administrators. Currently, principals, assistant principals, and other administrators are paid on the unified scale. We're proposing to have a separate new pay scale for those positions. Our third goal is to have pay differentiated based on school level, which is consistent with the current practice: elementary, middle, high school. The fourth goal is to have faster pay progression at the beginning of the scale, consistent with what we're proposing for teachers. So I'll go through each one of those, those goals and components. The first is to have market-competitive salaries. Again, we're targeting the 95% to 105% of the market average, and here, we're focusing on the maximum of the salary scale. So we want to be no less than 5% below the market average, but no more than 5% above the market average. The second component is to have separate salary scales. We found that all of the market comparators have separate pay scales for administrators. So we developed a separate schedule that would cover these positions. The positions that would be included in the school-based administrator scale are assistant principals, associate principals, directors of student services and student activities, and of course, principals. So the next, yeah, the next slide. So the new pay scale, the third component, is to have pay differentiated based on school level, again, consistent with the current approach. And the fourth component is to have a faster pay progression, similar to our proposed teacher scale. The proposed administrator scale has fewer steps than the current, has 15 steps instead of 20, and provides higher increases in those early steps compared with the later steps. We've eliminated the hold steps in this pay scale as well, and maintaining the methodology of annual pay steps. So the next slide compares the proposed scales to the current scales and the market. So this slide shows the assistant principals for, for each set. The first line shows the FY16 pay range for assistant principals. The second line shows our FY16 market average, and then the third shows our proposed pay range. So in the market study, we found that starting rates are significantly below market for school administrators, and the maximum rates were slightly below market, or somewhat below market, depending on which job title we're talking about. So we've proposed to have these shorter pay ranges, more consistent with market, and to be competitive with the market average. So the next slide shows the same kind of information, but for school principals. You can see principal for elementary school on the left, principal for middle school on the right, and principal for high school, I'm sorry, the middle, and then principal for high school on the right. And again, we found that the, the current pay range is much wider than in the market, with starting or minimum salaries significantly below market. I'm going to bring those up closer to market, and as well as the maximums, and have a shorter So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Susan to talk about implementation and the transition plan to these scales.
So I get the most difficult slides. I have to talk about the cost associated with implementing these two designs. And as you can see, cost factors are going to be critical in how we implement the two different designs. So we are going to recommend a two different approach for implementing, one for teacher scale, and then one approach, another approach that would be for the rest of the scale. So I'm going to kind of try to talk through the differences of those two approaches. And I think, again, because of the cost implication for teacher scale, we are anticipating that it will be a multi-year approach. It would probably take two to three years to get there. And therefore, we've actually built in any anticipated market movement, right? So when we built the scale, we anticipated what we thought the projected market would look like in '18 and beyond, okay? That's why you see a cost implementation of $130 million. Again, a multi-year approach. And, and that is because when we place teachers, we're going to place teachers on the exact same step that they're currently in. So that is to keep the integrity of number of years and the pay lanes that they're in, which is going to be a different approach than the school-based administrators. So as we move how much the salary scale at each pay lane and at that step, those costs or the varying amounts in the current scale to the new scale is going to be different for each individual. So we're really looking at the overall scale, but the impact to the individuals will be different, okay? So those increases for the teachers, it's going to, by the time the scale is fully implemented, the difference will be anywhere from 0% to 15.6% difference in their current pay versus where the new scale will be, okay? But it varies from individual to individual. And then, more than 90% of the teachers are going to see increases that are greater than And then, I also wanted to mention that with the BAs and BA, both of the BA and BA plus 15 pay lanes, we are well above the market currently. So we are eliminating some of the top steps in those two scales. So we have about 700 employees on those two pay lanes, where they will be grandfathered at what they're currently making, because what they're currently making is actually above what we're recommending in the new scale design.
I just want to add a couple of things. There are no necessarily, there are not any decision points for the board today. You all said, "Go back, work on some new designs of some, of some new scales." So we're showing you our work and our progress on this work, starting with the teacher scale and the administrative scale. We still have a lot of work underway, because a lot of our employees are on the unified scale. You remember, we've talked about we need to separate out some of our employees. We don't have so many people on the unified scale. So we're showing you our work and our progress. We still have some, a lot more work to do on these scales. We will have to determine at a later point, with regard to our budget decisions and how much money we, we will have available, as to how aggressive or how slow we have to be in implementing these new scales. That, those decisions will be coming, you know, in accordance with our regular timelines. But we wanted to show you our work today to see if, in fact, what we've done thus far is consistent with what you all have asked us to do. That is, to change our slope, you know, to, to put more of the, the salary increases earlier in career. Y'all remember all these conversations, and so that's what we've attempted to show you today. These aren't, you know, done. We will continue to work on these moving forward. I know there's been some consternation about showing total compensation and salary. On scales, no one in the industry, even the county, no one, shows total compensation on your salary scales. You just don't. We have done the ERFC study, that conversation's coming up. You know, certainly, in light of what, what the board learns through that process, you know, those, again, will be budget decisions as we move forward, and how we implement, and how aggressive we are in, in some of this moving forward. So the larger picture is, you know, there's more work to be done. We still have continued to work on the unified scales, but we're showing you where we are from a design perspective around the teacher scale and, and school-based administrator scale. But it will affect our budget decisions.
This fall.
This fall. Will have a major bearing on how, how aggressive we think we can be in implementing the scale.
Okay. And then, I just have one more critical slide, which is a different approach to implementing the school-based administrator scale and all other unified scale work. So with the school-based administrator scale, we are recommending that we place administrators to the step closest, but not less than their current salary, okay? If you recall, for teachers, they're moving from pay lane to step. For administrators, we are going to be placing them closest to what they're currently making, but not less than. And therefore, the cost associated with the school-based, school-based administrator scale is 0.9 million, and we would recommend that we go ahead and implement this change in FY18. And then, because we are placing them closest to what we're currently making, any market-scale adjustment that the board would approve for FY18 would move this scale. Whereas for teacher scale, because we've already built in any market movement, we would not need additional funding for market-scale adjustment for the teacher scales. And then, as Dr. Garza mentioned, our next phase of this work is implementing the, or recommending the paraprofessional scales, as well as all the other positions that are on the unified scales, and then also coming up with a model for differentiated pay. And our goal is, again, for the paraprofessional, as well as all the other US scale positions, to have an implementation recommendation that's similar to the school-based administrators, placing employees closest to what they're currently making. We'll take some questions.
Excellent. We have, Karen, do you have anything more to add? Excellent. So we have five questions. First, Sandy, and then we'll follow with Janie, Jeanette, Megan, and Ilya.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the excellent presentation. I do think this is getting us in the right direction, so I'm very pleased to see where we're going with the teacher scale. I am looking at this line, and this line looks a lot better than it, than it does now and than it, than it used to, so thank you. I had two questions, really. One was on the lanes, and I, I see we have eliminated one lane, and, and that's, I, I think that's a good idea. I'm wondering if you considered collapsing it even more? And I say that because we have, in, in reading the narrative, three-quarters of our teachers are either at the MA or the, or the, the masters plus 30, and so we have two lanes for those, and then we have three lanes for the remaining 25%. So I'm just wondering if you gave any consideration to the idea of collapsing it even further, like some of our neighboring jurisdictions have done?
We did consider that, and we, and we talked about that, but as we actually looked at a lot of the surrounding jurisdictions, this reflects primarily the market. We had the same thoughts that you did, but when we looked out there, we wanted to make sure that our lanes and our scales were something that potential teachers understood and were familiar with. And we felt like that, as we looked at the marketplace, collapsing to these five really reflected something that potential teachers would see as something they recognized as kind of standard across the industry. Most of the districts are at this area, even to the top, having that masters plus 30 and that PhD lane, rather than consolidating those into, into one lane.
And has this been run by the teachers' organizations, and they, they're supportive of this number of lanes?
Yes, we, we have shared this with them and talked to them about this.
Okay. We've shared both models with both our school-based administrative groups and to get feedback. Unlike you, Ms. Evans, I was hoping to consolidate more, and we just felt like it was more than probably our, our employees could tolerate. The change was just maybe too dramatic. This was going to be an easier transition to, to sell.
Okay. And then, my, my last question, which won't come as a surprise, is when are we going to be considering pay for parent liaisons?
That'll come in fall of 2016, when we recommend adjustments to the paraprofessional scales and all the other US scale positions.
Wonderful. I'll look forward to that. Thank you. Janie, please.
Thank you. I'm very pleased to see the, the, the design of the pay scales. I think this absolutely addresses our concerns earlier and the suggestions. So I'm very pleased that. I think compressing the steps in the earlier years for teachers, all of this makes it much more competitive. We know, obviously, the sagging in the scales. We also know just the reality, the expectation. We also know just the reality, the expectation that people in their twenties decide to become a teacher, is that what they're going to be until they are fifty or sixty? We are not seeing that data in any profession. So I think front-loading the, the pay scales makes us that much more competitive. We also know that a lot of our young educators have debt that they have to pay off from graduate school. And I, I also support continuing to recognize continued educational attainment. We are an educational institution, and I think that there is great value in, in encouraging our educators to continue to receive their masters. I absolutely support getting rid of the bachelor's plus thirty. I know Montgomery County Public Schools has never had that. And it is better to encourage people getting their masters. And I don't, I don't see benefit in pushing people to get a doctorate unless they have other needs. Because that is a significant time requirement. So I, I really support this. I'm glad to see, looking at competitive salaries for our school-based administrators as well. So in essence, I absolutely support this, and this is good work. I know being able to, to afford all of this, well, a lot of it will depend on revenue availability. But I think as a layout as to where we want to go, I think this is an excellent suggestion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I definitely support and appreciate the change of slope. We had a lot of conversation about that and what would be better for being competitive in the markets. I really like the look of that. The place I have concern, and I know Dr. Garza, you already brought it up, is about the total compensation. I'm not quite sure I understand or I'm comfortable with the suggestion of where that slope is going to, where the line itself is going to rise or fall among the market without having the conversation in conjunction with where our benefits and pension are. I understand not showing it on the graph because that is not how it is presented within the market. But in a sense, we're prioritizing paying teachers and employees what they want, how they want it, in order to be competitive in a market. So the slope is one piece of that, but where the salary is can't be different, can't be solely the conversation without having the rest of that conversation. Because that changes, that changes our competitiveness. If we continue to give the kinds of health and benefits that we are, and we say as a budget priority, we want to also raise that line so we're paying our teachers more, we know at the end of the day, the budget isn't going to exist for that. So when do we have that conversation that says, we're going to prioritize what the teachers want to be paid in conjunction with how are we going to address the pension and benefits? If that's, if that's putting us so much above the market? I, I do think that we need to have that conversation together. We have had both pieces, and I'd love to have both pieces in conversation together. The other thing that...
May I say something on that? That, that meeting, that discussion's Thursday night. So, you know, this is kind of the design, it's not a done deal. But Thursday night, the presentation on ERFC will continue. And you'll see in that presentation, they lay out options that are available to us, you know, with changes, potential changes to any of the benefit considerations moving forward. So I think the two coupled together after that, then we can make some, some decisions.
Okay, fair enough.
So I think it's timely on Thursday night.
Okay. And then this is just, I guess, a technical question. On the assistant principals and principals, looking at the change in scale, it looks like middle school assistant principals are getting a hundred and six, are at a hundred and six percent of market, and high school principals are at a hundred and six point six percent. So why are those, it looks like the other assistant principals are at a hundred and three percent. So why the decision that middle school assistant principals would be above even the salary range you've mentioned in the presentation?
Are you talking about the maximum of the scale?
Correct.
Or the minimum? Okay.
The one eighteen, four ninety-seven over one eleven, eight thirteen is a hundred and six percent. And then principals, high school is a hundred and six point six percent.
Actually, I think it's the other way around. If you look at those, are you talking about principals, correct?
High school principals, that one sixty-three, seven twelve over...
Our proposed scale is, is on the right.
It's below market. The maximum.
But your proposed, but your, oh, okay. Thank you.
We, we actually did that on purpose to make sure the maximum salaries were right around ninety-nine to a hundred percent of market, so that any market adjustments that we may do, we could reflect it going forward. So we use the sixteen as the base.
Megan.
So I agree with many comments made by my colleagues that streamlining the pay lanes is desirable. I have no problem with what we're being shown to date on that. And having heard from teachers in the community, I also support the direction that we've been going, which is to become more salary-oriented in our total compensation. But we're, I guess I'm going to follow a little bit up on what Ms. Huff just said. I'm, I'm concerned about the information we have in front of us. EFR, ERFC is not total benefits. It's one of our benefits, but it's not total benefits. So I guess what I don't, what I'm, I'm struggling with is we approached this effort as total compensation. This has never been about just salary to salary. And as Ms. Huff was saying, at the end of the day, we have to operate a school system that's competitive in the region, but also is something that we can actually afford to be doing. And so what I don't understand is why we still aren't having those comparisons that show from the initial information, the graphs, that when it came to just salary only, we were really substantially below. When it came to total benefits, the gap was significantly narrowed. So why are we still having this conversation, what I view as in isolation? And the reason being is when we look at moving toward a more salary-focused total compensation, we still have to then have the conversation of, so then what happens with total benefits? And with the cost of healthcare, it's continuing to rise. You know, I'm just wanting to even just get a sense of how the employees who are part of the focus groups, did they understand that as we're trying to be within the market, it's total compensation within the market? So do they understand that as we move and improve these salary scales and their salary compensation, there may be a change in their total benefits? Has that conversation occurred already? And when will the board be seeing that? Because a hundred and thirty million dollars is a substantial price tag. And it's, I don't even know if that a hundred and thirty million is accurate unless what we're saying is, we're not going to touch benefits. And we will now be far exceeding the region when you add in salary plus total benefits. If it's no, then that would have been helpful as part of today's presentation.
That, that's correct. We did try to run some preliminary numbers on the total compensation. And when we ran total compensation initially, we talked about the cost of benefits, right? So how much does health benefits cost FCPs? But what we haven't done is what is the value of those cost benefits? ERFC benefits were the first ones. We started talking about the value of those costs, of those benefits. So when you preliminary look at, even for like health, we, we did look at cost, but when you look at the value of the benefit of that cost, FCP actually has slightly lower value. So it gets very complicated once you start adding the cost and the value. But, but to kind of share with you what we had shared preliminary back in December, even when you add the total cost of benefits, we still do come out about a hundred and five percent of the market, which means if you defined our market to be ninety-five to a hundred and five percent, we are still within that range. So we're not significantly above the market.
And, and we can bring that back. We actually had compensation, this presentation scheduled several months ago, and it had to get canceled due to just lots of things going on. So we can bring back the analysis you're asking for, look at this at total compensation. I will remind the board that when we showed you that before, our healthcare costs, our health benefits, were right in line with the market. We weren't, we, there wasn't, we weren't higher than other surrounding jurisdictions. The differentiation, however, was with ERFC. And so that's why we, we were doing some work on health, healthcare, and we'll certainly bring that back in the coming months. But we didn't show a difference there. The difference was ERFC.
So I thank you, Dr. Garza, for that clarification, because I think that's what's really important as part of this conversation. I mean, all of us here want to ensure that our employees are as, you know, compensated at the most competitive level possible. But we can't be having the conversation in a vacuum. And so when we saw that initial graph and saw what a differential even in our own competitiveness, when it was just us with salary only, against the benchmarked against the region, and then our total compensation benchmarks against everybody else. And it was a sizable gap narrowing. So now that we're going to do this, I still would have liked to have seen the overlay of, okay, now that we do this, and you overlay with total compensation, now do what do we look like? Because I'm only getting in isolation ninety-five to a hundred and five percent, but that's salary only. And the, having participated in town halls in my district, people who are struggling to still get their salary, get their benefits, and worry about retirement that's now pushed to sixty-seven for anyone who's going to be able to pull out their 401Ks without penalty and get social security, you know, they're looking at, at our models that we have in the state and local governments and saying, you know, my tax dollars run the government systems. And I, so I, I think we, we need to recognize that we're being mindful, a total compensation for employee has to be understood and, and examined. And then the other thing is, Dr. Garza, you mentioned that in terms of the county, in terms of the, when they are benchmarking their salaries against the region, that they just do it salary only, and that's it. So I think that's really helpful for us as a board to have that dialogue of, so we're trying to be mindful of total compensation. Is Fairfax County government being totally mindful about total compensation? Because if everybody's just focusing on salary only, benefits still are a to, a piece of the total compensation. And I, I apologize for not being more succinct, but I just, this worries me a little.
On that note too, I just want to remind the board that the ERFC analysis that was provided to you all included the county government as one of the comparisons. So that's also important to this conversation.
So I guess into my question, at what point will we, as we're moving along with this, because I, what I really heard, most importantly from you, Dr. Garza, is a hundred and thirty million dollars is the estimate. And then can you implement that over a couple of years' time? I mean, based on our budget needs, how soon can we get there? But I think we still have to have the conversation of, you, you're getting, you know, we're estimating a hundred and thirty million, again, is that in isolation to doing absolutely nothing to our, our benefits and total compensation? That piece, could somebody just clarify for me? Is that part, that's a future piece of our conversation? We're not going to just green light these salary scales and no one ever went to the...
That, that was why I made the comment, that this is, these are models. We have some other big decisions to make moving forward, and most of those have to do with how much can we afford.
Megan, I think the answer is that we've decided on, or we've talked about a follow-up discussion of the composite of our salary with the overlay of retirement benefits and retirement and other benefits.
Yeah, total benefits.
Total benefits.
Can I just add one thing about the importance of showing it this way is that I do understand the importance of the total compensation, other benefits that go into that. But that isn't how potential employees really look at it in the market. And so one of the things that we think this is important for is because we have to be able to show this to other people as we're trying to recruit and also retain our staff members. And that's why this piece is important. I do understand the total comp piece and, and wanting that information. But then that also provides an educational opportunity for us, both internally and externally, if we're going to talk about total compensation, because most of the other school districts don't show it that way. And so when they're going out recruiting and trying to find the same employees that we are from the same pool, they're saying, well, look, if you come to Arlington, you can make this, or if you go here, you can make this. They're not asking those questions. And so we have to be able to show ourselves in that same kind of light as the other jurisdictions around us.
I completely agree, Dr. Rameen. In fact, I believe that this is going to be incredibly beneficial to our school system, that our younger teachers especially, and, and the fact that we live in a transient area with high military and State Department and people coming in and out, salary is really far more of an attractive piece than a, a benefit that some people need to be here for twenty-five, thirty years to attain. So I very much applaud the direction we're going. I just, from a fiscal standpoint, I think we have to be making sure we have a composite conversation. So thank you.
Ilya.
Okay, thank you. So, Dr. Garza, so we're not making final decision on this. Just want to make it clear that, and also that estimated implementation cost of a hundred and thirty million dollars could come from different sources, including, you know, if the board in the future want to take a look at the benefit pieces, that's a potential source of, well, revenue to, to be able to implement this hundred and thirty million dollars. So when do you think will be the time the board will say, go ahead, give you a green light and do this, you know, multi-year phased in implementation? Is that when you act upon next year's budget time? Is that, is that how you see it, or?
Well, we're, we're starting to look at the fiscal forecast right now. This year's a little different in that there's some unknowns. Right now, the state financial picture's changing a little bit. You've read about that. We didn't get a specific guidance from the county, which is, you know, potentially good for us. I don't know, we'll see. So some things we're looking at. So I think it would be early fall, we'd be in a position to come back to you and say, you know, how much we feel, you know, can we phase this in? How many years do we think it would take? You all could also, I think it's going to be somewhat limited in just my personal view, but I think you all could say, we want to shift some money from this to, to compensation. Like for example, health insurance or from ERFC. I think you're going to see Thursday night, we're saddled a little bit more limited there than, than what, what we'd hope, just because of the financial long-term obligations that we have to fund. So, but the answer I think is early fall, maybe September, October.
Okay, thank you. The next question is, you know, intuitively, this model, which will make us a little more competitive compared to other school districts and the market, will make us to be more competitive in the recruitment and retaining our teachers, about is there any study done that this compressed in a scale would actually result in us to be able to, a, a, do a better job in recruiting and retaining? Is there a study, or is it just intuition?
I believe that the consultants provided early on in this process, some of the research best practices across the country, but what our competitors are also doing. And finally, what our own employees have said that they preferred is what we've shared thus far.
Yes, that's correct.
And so, you know, if you could just send us again, some of those studies again, because I don't remember all those, you know, going back, you know, many months ago.
But I think, yeah, the most compelling information or data you would see is coming from your own employees and from your current teachers. And overwhelmingly, the message I heard when I spoke with them and looked at the data from the survey was that a more rapid career earnings, definitely a very strong interest. And we've also seen your, you know, our comparator school districts doing the same thing and having the faster career earnings at the beginning. And I think that's, that's a, a big draw. As, as other folks have mentioned here, teachers come into their, beginning of their profession with, often with student debt, with starting a family, wanting to, if not buy a home, then have a home. have a home of their own or an apartment of their own. And I think that's, that's the message I was hearing, is that early in one's career and to recognize the growth, the tremendous amount of skill development that occurs early on, that having that recognized is something that your current teachers have said to me would be, you know, a real vote of confidence and a commitment that they would feel from the school district if that kind of thing was recognized and rewarded.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple more questions. This one goes, yes?
I was just going to make an interesting note that our surrounding districts, there's, I believe, three currently that have initiated a compensation study on their own, or it has an RFP out there for compensation study. So, we know the market is going to be changing and the scale is designed to kind of address some of those market fluidity.
Okay, this question goes to Ms. Quinn. I'm trying to have a clear understanding of what you said about market scale adjustment for the going forward, if this were to be implemented. So, market scale adjustment is going to be subsumed basically as a part of this implementation?
That's correct.
If we did, let's say, for example, if we were to implement this over the course of a three-year period, then for that three-year period of time, there would be no market scale adjustment for teachers. Is that your proposal?
That's our current thinking, because we had projected where we are thinking the 18 market would be, because each year, we are going to go back and look at our position compared to the market.
But, that does not affect the steps?
Correct. There will still be step increases if the board approves to provide step increases.
With that in mind, you know, for example, for this fiscal year, the market scale adjustment of 1% for teachers alone, how much was that?
Somewhere between 14 to 15 million dollars.
14 to 15 dollars. If you were to be using three-year period of time, then that could easily be about 50 million dollars. That's a $130 million cost, actually, since, you know, we assume that the teachers will get annually market scale adjustment, the 15 million dollars would have gone into that anyway.
Correct.
So, cost is rather than, rather than 100, you need to subtract that 50, so that's 80 million dollars. But, that does not include the 40 million dollars already invested this year, correct?
Correct.
That's on top of that.
Yes.
So, if you're using that three-year model, and I'm not saying that I am definitely safe for the three years, don't even know whether we can fiscally afford to do that, then using that, because early last year, when we tried to bring the teacher pay to market, basically market, and we are only able to bring it about a little bit less than half toward the market and cost us 40 million dollars. And we would say that in order to complete the rest of the work we need to do putting up to the market, will cost us probably another 40 million dollars, because we're looking at 80 million dollar total cost at the time to bring it up to the market.
It was actually a little bit more than 80, but remember, that's last year's market.
Okay.
The market moves on it.
That's so, I mean, as of, at the time we're looking at. So, so if we have about 40 million dollars left to bring it up to the market, now we are talking about not 40 million dollars, it's 130 minus the 50 million dollars, which will be subsumed, that we'll have to invest another 40 million dollars on top of that to implement this. Basically, we are investing a lot more than initially with our last year debt, as we're talking about bringing it up to the market.
Because last year was 16 market, and last year also, when we invested that 40 million, we were just trying to close the gap between steps, rather than trying to also accelerate some of the increases upfront and shortening the scale. So, there's a little bit additional costs associated with the new recommended design.
Now, one last question, I'm sorry, goes to HR, that looking at the proposed step, minimum, you know, number of steps for the masters, 23 versus our current 29, if somebody were to stay with us to 30 years to get the full retirement benefit with a master's degree, that that particular teacher will have to be on the basically same pay, same pay for about seven years or eight years, you know, step 23 for eight years. Could we, could we safely or honestly or confidently say to the particular teacher that, well, your 30-year experience is going to be only as good as 23-year experience?
If I understand your point, I think while we are proposing a 23-step scale, assuming there is no scale adjustments over those seven years, that individual would stay at the same salary. I don't know if we can assume the scale, market scale adjustment over those seven years. But, that would be, so there would be scale adjustment continuing for that person who's at the top step. Also, I think that's an excellent point to bring up in your future discussion on the trade-off between benefits and pay, because I think one of the other things we found in the survey is that at about 15 to 20 years of service is when teachers fully appreciate the value of the ERFC benefit and the value of those retirement benefits. And again, not having to do anything with costs that they might have recognized along the time in their career till that point, but the value of that benefit is really fully understood and appreciated at around that time in someone's career. So, that's something for you to think about as you have that total compensation discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, just at a top level, I think what I'm hearing on this assessment of how teachers want to be paid, is this really sort of in common speak vernacular, an issue of millennials versus everybody older than millennials? That the fundamental approach to how I live, how I plan, everything is shifting such that, you know, the money now and the money and salary has become inherently more important?
I'd have to think about that one. But, I, thinking back to my conversations with teachers and looking at the survey results, the message I heard from everyone is wanting respect for their profession and a acknowledgement from the school district as to who, the value they bring to the students and to their classroom.
Okay, that's a different question. That wasn't really what we understood.
No, I understand. But, but what I've heard was whether that comes in the form of benefits or pay or how it's delivered, I did not hear an enormous generational difference. I really didn't.
One of my concerns, because this is about the only thing that I've heard at all from the people that are paying attention to this, and maybe it's because of where they are in the salary scale, are from people at the top end of the salary scale that would be either most negatively or least favorably affected by this change. And I'm worried that although we've said, there is, and I don't know another word for it, I call it the swale, the, you know, reverse camelback in the slope, that fixing the swale will create this concept among the more experienced teachers, I'm not going to say older, that would be ageist, more experienced teachers, that we're doing something for other people that we're not doing for them, and that there's going to be a feeling of, I don't know what, malaise, ill will. And so, I'm not necessarily asking for a response on that, I'm just saying that I, my predictive analysis on my crystal ball is that's going to be a problem, because if I'm already hearing about it, I have a feeling it's coming.
Ma'am, I agree with you, Ms. Schultz. I do think even in our current structure, forget these changes, current structure, and we have 26 steps or something like that, we have people, teachers at longevity. And I will tell you invariably, when we do something and we give a step and a 1% market scale adjustment, or we don't give a market scale adjustment, only a step, because that's happened in recent past, I will always hear from the people at longevity, because I feel like, I mean, so, I get that, I get exactly what you're saying. So, we will, you know, any kind of design changes we make, you know, when we have limited resource and we have to make, you know, strategic decisions about where we place most of our money, we are going to make somebody unhappy. There's no doubt about that.
Okay, I have a couple.
But, I do think the reason, your point is a good one in that, so I think we have to be really cognizant of what the market is and what, you know, how others are designed as well for that reason.
I just, I know that communication can sometimes be, you know, wind in our favor or Achilles heel, and unfortunately, more often than not, it's the latter. I have a couple of specific questions. On slide 14, we could go to slide 14. What is to prevent looking at that, and I'm kind of looking at the purple and mustard, or the dark purple and mustard lines compared to the dotted blue line? What would be the scenario of a year seven or eight FCPS teacher going, man, if I leave now, I can really make a killing, you know, someplace else? And then, I know it's happened. And then, after they top out, coming back? Do they come back and return at a year seven so that they bump back down? Or, because what I'm worried about is, we put all the investment in ramping them up in a situation like this, they go, take that experience, go deploy it someplace else at a lesser cost for that other division, because they get a seasoned teacher who's already trained, and then they come back to us and then top out in a higher salary scale? I'm just saying that there's a danger, you know, in the way I see this.
And with so many school divisions in such close proximity, we always have folks that are always looking over the hedger, right, for where the grass is greener? But, with our system here in Fairfax, if you come to us, we will only place you as high as step 15. And so, if you went somewhere else and worked in 20, 21 years and then came here because you thought you could move higher, we would only place you as high as step 15. That's our current, that's our current practice, and we aren't recommending changing that at this point.
So, if that's step 15, but is it step 15 commensurate with whatever their current salary is or it's not? Okay, all right, well, then that's the safeguard. On slide 17, I think you answered this, but I just wanted to clarify. Were you saying that generally, some of the other divisions? No, yes. That they have more, the frame of those 15 steps, they're, so they have fewer steps? Okay. Ms. Quinn, you said, did you say, I was trying to write and listen at the same time, 90% of teachers will get more than a 5% increase?
Correct. And that ranges anywhere from, well, ultimately, when the salary is fully implemented, and that range is actually from less than half a percent to 15.6%. So, some, somewhere on the scale and certain steps, it could be as high as 50%.
That's if we implemented it, all of it overnight.
Correct. It's after the full implementation.
And you said that there would be some that would be above that ceiling. I don't think that you can answer that now, but I would, I would be curious, and I think the board would be curious, at what cost, how many and for how long? Well, I guess in reverse order. How many, for how long and at what cost are those people, because I'm assuming they would retire out of the system? So, to me, that's like a next step question. The only other question I have, and it's maybe a little bit to what Ms. McLaughlin was saying earlier on slide 19, and this is a concern that I have, because I had this concern the last time, and I don't see it fixed in this presentation either. It's one thing to say that the left bars in each of those sections of the graph, which represent our current pay potential salary gap between one, you know, the opening and the topping out of each of those positions. But, there is no distribution along that line to indicate if that's a reality. Is, so, for example, let's just take the middle school principals, 83, 632 to 147, 597. Are 80% of our middle school principals between 83 and 93? Is there one that's at 83? Are there none that are at 83? Are 100% of the ones that we have above 100? I mean, there's all that, that's just two numbers and a bar in between them. The way that that becomes meaningful content to us in terms of making executive decisions on policy and where we think money should go and whatever, is if, if I heard that 80%, for example, I'm just throwing this out there, if I heard that 80% of our middle school principals were in the bottom quartile of that bar, I'd be wickedly concerned. If I found out that 90% of them were making in the top third, that would, that number, none of that would bother me whatsoever, but I have nothing to show me other than two numbers on a bar.
So, we could provide you the distribution. And again, this is trying to represent where the scale would be, and if you notice on our proposed column, we did increase that lower bar just to kind of reflect.
Ms. Quinn, though, this is the frustrating thing, though. Just telling us what the scale is doesn't have any correlation to, is anybody getting paid across that scale?
Let me explain why we increased the lower part of this chart, because we did not have principals getting paid at the lower end of our scales, is why we had to increase that lower bar. So, if you could look at the market, we're actually above the market on that minimum. Trying to kind of chart out the progression of our staff from being a teacher to an AP to a principal, to see where they would end up initially on these principal scales. But, currently, you're correct, we do have principals that are higher up on the scale because they have many years of...
I'm not asking for a progression or future predictive analysis or anything else. I'm saying, we've got X many principals, X many assistant principals, throw them on the graph and let us see where they are and what happens, and say, okay, well, the principals that we have in middle school who've been principals for one to three years, you know, are here, the ones that have been principals for, you know, three to seven years are here, and, I mean, there, these...
Elizabeth, I think Ms. Quinn just committed to providing a distribution.
A distribution, that's correct.
But, to be perfectly honest, I appreciate that, and that's a good reminder, and we'll keep moving. But, we had this conversation the last time we had the work session, and that's why it's frustrating.
We're going to put it on the follow-up.
Good work on the slope. I think you've done, done good work with that, and I think you've set out a way to implement this in a caring way that doesn't disadvantage people, so I think that's appreciated. The one point I want to raise is on the salary lanes. I agree with those on the board who think we could collapse it more. Personally, I don't see the utility in a BA plus 15. What I would, when we're talking about incentivizing people to further their learning, I think it would be a better incentive to have a lane that's multiple masters. So, that would encourage not only those who have come into the district with a MA in education potentially to pursue further study in their subject area, but it would also encourage career changers who come with a different degree to pursue something in education. So, I hope you would look at that. Thank you.
Excellent point. Tammy, please.
Thank you, and thank you for this. I appreciate it. Most of my questions have been answered. I had questions, the one that Mr. Moon asked about the more detailed phase-in approach, so I appreciate your answers on that. I see in the follow-up, one of the things... I see in the follow-up, one of the things we'll be looking at is differentiated pay models. Again, could I have a potential timeframe on that? And I want to make a comment on that as well.
For implementation, we'd be looking at for next school year, but to bring those models would be this fall.
This fall, okay, for differentiated.
For fiscal year 18 and beyond.
Yes, I understood that.
Not for this coming school year, 17, 18, maybe, and beyond.
Okay, coming to the board into, in the fall, and then for potential. So, all right. My comments on that are just that I've participated in a lot of focus groups over this past year for this current budget cycle, and just when we look at that, I hope we are looking at not just compensation, but education modeling, you know, professional development opportunities, because that's what I heard a lot from the focus groups that I sat in, and I realized those are limited in numbers and limited names. But there was a consistency, because I did several of those things. So, I just hope that that's part of it. Because I've always had a concern, because I represent so many schools that would be affected by this differentiated pay models, and I think, and this is hard to say, but when you see a school that requires differentiated pay models, you have people who want to be there because they want to be there for that school, not for the pay, they would be there with and without. So, what I want to do is I want to still maintain the ability to detract those types of people, and not have the pay modeling be the attraction factor, because I think it takes a certain individual, and I feel like I really just have to say that out loud, because it takes that certain individual to be at those schools that are high need, needing to perform at a higher rate because of the poverty, because of the impact, the other impactful factors that affect them. So, I hope you take that into concern. Is that something I've heard a lot consistently across the board from these, as well as, you know, just that opinion?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, and they're actually a little bit related to what Ryan and Tammy brought up. My question, and hopefully you can speak to it, is when we're looking at the BA versus MA versus PhD, and I know I did a lot of research when I started teaching, first of all, I didn't see a graph for the BA. I know we had it for the MA and PhD. And then also, if, you know, Dr. Garza and maybe Dr. Ramey can speak to the value added for the different degrees versus education, retention versus actual impact on learning. So, I don't know if we have, if you can consolidate a little bit of the research and best practices that are out there, and just the overall philosophy of why we have these different pay lanes and how they impact the system. That's my first question.
Well, the research on that is actually not what you want to hear. The research on that has been, I think, pretty clear that differentiating pay based upon degrees, you know, there's no correlation to effectiveness. But with that said, I think we're somewhat unique there. Because most of our, and I think it's also where we sit, our proximity that makes it unique, because most of the programs, a lot of our teachers were hired from, combined the masters as part of the degree program. So, when our, a lot of the teachers we hire are coming from different colleges and universities in this area, they graduate with a masters. And so, we hire them with the masters. So, I do think there's some benefit to what we've been doing. It is working for us, but I would say, the national research on having varied lanes based upon degrees is not particularly conducive with regard to benefits. And Dr. Ramey, you may want to correct me if you think I'm wrong on that. But I want to be very clear on this. I think it served us well, and I would be reticent to change, to change it here. So, I hope I answered your question. And would you disagree with me? You're welcome, you're welcome to do that, Dr. Ramey.
I 100% agree with Dr. Garza and what she said. When you look at the research, the return on investment as you move from a masters to advanced degrees in terms of effectiveness in a classroom, it's really not there. But then also, the other point is, we live, you know, in an industry that history continues to guide the way, and as we look at that and look at what potential employees know and understand, it's pay lanes based on education attainment. You've seen other districts kind of flirt with other ideas and other ways to enhance pay, but almost all systems at their base still have pay lanes based on educational degree, and they layer things on top of it. And it's just part of the culture that we have here in education, and so, it's one of those pieces where if you want to be competitive, we need to speak the language that people are familiar with, and it's pay lanes based on degree.
Right, I guess a little follow-up, and I don't know if Ryan was getting to that, is do you foresee any time in this future where we would look at, well, you know, we really would love to have dual-certified teachers? We would love to, you know, it would really be beneficial for us to have people who can be flexible, who can be in our, you know, ESO programs. Do you foresee that being in the pay scales?
I do, but I do from more of a differentiated model. So, I think when we start talking about in the fall, we just had someone throw on our plates, we'd hoped to start having these conversations in spring, but in the fall, we do want to start talking about what differentiation looks like here, and where do we want to place value? And it could be, and I've seen other jurisdictions do this, where they say, well, we want to incentivize having more than one certification, or that we have teachers that are certified in ELL, or whatever. We can certainly tie that to stipends that teachers get that are on top of, that demonstrate value there. So, absolutely, I think that's a possibility, and it does, that helps the system, because it helps us be a little bit more flexible with the staffing we have when people hold more certifications.
One last quick question for...
Oh, before your question, I did want to point out that there is a narrative section attached to this presentation that has all the graphs for each of the pay lanes.
Oh, I didn't see the BA. Maybe I missed that in there. Was the BA in there? Okay, thank you. And then Susan, a quick question. Do we have a sense of, once we reach this full implementation, what a step increase would cost in a year? Estimate?
We believe it will be close to what the current cost, but I do believe there's going to be $2 to $3 million in additional step costs associated with the teacher's scale.
A minor difference.
The hardest thing is getting the scale implemented. The incremental changes from that point are less challenging, are less significant for us.
As good as we're planning and looking at this. Thank you.
So, given that we are 10 minutes left, I want to know if anybody has a go-back before we do the follow-up. Ms. Evans?
Quickly following up on the pay lanes. If you were down the road, perhaps, looking at further collapsing them, is there a way to know, based on the national research, which of the current lanes are the least beneficial, or the, well, if they're not beneficial at all, then, but which ones are the least meaningful?
Hypothetically speaking, I think you would look to collapse at the top, the MA plus 30, and the PHD lanes. You need that lane between the bachelor's and the MA as a stepping stone, and so, that really leaves you on the top side, and so, collapsing that lane above, and there's other ways.
That's a very small number, isn't it? I believe.
It is, yes.
I saw that it was something like 3%.
But to the point, it does, I think Mr. McAlveen made the point, it encourages, though, people to keep learning and progressing in their career.
All right, thank you. That was all.
But you could also find ways to, yes, incent or reward your employees that do take that, those steps at the top to get their PhD or their EDD as well.
If I can add one point to that as well, there are some positions that you have here at the school district that do require a PhD, your speech-language pathologist, they're the starting, the beginning of the career is when someone gets a PhD. So, that's something to, while it's small in number, I think that's something to take into consideration, because they are paid on the teacher pay scales.
Ms. Huff?
You would almost have to create a different scale for them. On those that require very specialized, that's where we may, I think, in the future, need to have our own scales. I think that's why we have a huge unified scale, and I think that's why we have so many lanes in the teacher scales, because we have so many people paid on those scales that we've had to add to meet those needs. So, you know, down the road, we may have to, you know, even have different lanes, I mean, completely different scales for different employee groups.
So, I wanted to clarify, follow-up on something Mr. Moon was asking. So, is the presumption that if we hadn't done the $40 million this past year, that that $130 million cost would have been $170 million? Okay. And then, I just want to clarify, because, Mr. Ramey, you did state well that when we go to recruit, this is what we show and this is what attracts. And so, my comments about the total compensation and the benefits and the pensions are because I want to advocate that we can do this, and that we can make this happen, that we can make that slope happen and these scales happen. But realistically and responsibly speaking, we figure out how we can do that, and I firmly believe that the pension and benefits conversation is a must-have so we can get to this. So, I just wanted to clarify that that's where I'm coming from when I say, not because I want it to be presented differently, but because I want to be able to do this.
So, before we go on the, go to follow-on actions, any more questions from the board? No? Okay. Elaine, do you have a list? Thank you.
I don't believe it's just slide 19. I think it's, maybe it's slide 19 and slide 18. Yeah, I don't, I don't even know that you need to do, I mean, yeah, you can. I mean, you guys know what I'm talking about. No, no, it's for the ones who will be above the ceiling at implementation.
The 700, approximately 700 employees that will be grandfathered at their current rate.
Right. I mean, I don't know how to phrase it so that you'll understand it.
But that's the second question?
Yes. The second question is, for the ones that, that you've said, if we implement this, they'll have to be grandfathered, because they would exceed the pay scale.
Correct.
The question is, is that, is that a, you know, are they above the pay scale? And, you know, we predict that that's a 10-year commitment, a five-year commitment, how much, how long? I mean, you understand.
Yes.
Yeah, we do. On the first question, additional analysis and total compensation, I wrote that down as me, as being, the request was that the, both of these are the proposed scales, that we overlay those with total benefits, not just school-based administrators, but all of them. The proposed scales overlay those with total benefits.
To include retirement?
Yes.
With the kind of...
Yeah. Yeah.
I actually have something else, which is that the superintendent will come back to the board in early fall for recommendations on how to best accomplish this.
Well, that's the budget process.
Yes, but as part of the budget process, so that we actually have a specific piece on salaries in that, of how we're going to do that.
I'm just suggesting, I don't know that it needs to be a follow-up. That's part of the budget development process. I don't know that it needs to be a discrete follow-up item.
Okay.
That's the only thing I was suggesting. I don't know that it needs to be, that's just part of the budget development process. It's up to you all, if you all want it listed.
And then, the other thing was that when you come back to us with differentiated pay models, if you would also include a component which is professional development supports as part of a differentiated experience, to follow up on Ms. Darnack-Kovak's recommendation.
Okay, I didn't realize we were going to get into debate on this today, but I will tell you, there's some, I think it's worthy of a conversation when we have the differentiated. I think we need to, need to be really clear about the impacts of adding professional development as a component of pay, differentiated pay. There have been some systems across the United States that have done that, and it's not really moved the needle very much. And we're just going to have to make choices, and I don't know if we want to put professional development, we want to put teacher leadership, or we want to put, so...
And with differentiated...
I would say maybe include professional development as one of the options or discussions, but not to say upfront it will be. Do you see the distinction I'm making, Tammy? Okay.
Yes, and that's fine.
There we go.
That was the thing, options for. And, and I think, you know, and again, not being, not being in the education arena, when I did talk professional development, leadership opportunities were one of the things. So, so I think, you know, we need to have all of that in there and have that as part of that greater, broader conversation.
Ms. Evans?
Do we need to include a reference to parent liaisons, or is that understood, that we're going to get that in the fall?
With the unified scale.
All right. Okay, as long as that's understood. Good, thank you.
Anything else? Then we have gotten back on schedule. But can I suggest that we take a half an hour for lunch, and we will reconvene at 2 o'clock to discuss the budget?